Welcome to the City Council's August 9th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Jen Woolison, Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Cecilia Taylor. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nerida Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our regular August 9th City Council meeting. For those members of the public who wish to provide public comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my introductions. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? All right, we will proceed with the report from closed session. I would like to introduce City Attorney Doherty for a report out from the August 4th closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subjects not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda section's Consent Calendar, Regular Business, informational items. City Clerk Heron, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. And our first speaker will be Lindsay Reich.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Nash and council members. My name is Lindsay Reich, I've spoken before. I am the CEO of Warm Water Wellness. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that was born out of the need to advocate for the reopening of the Mickelson Therapy Pool at Mills Health Center in San Mateo. I'm here tonight to give you some updates since I last appeared here before you. We had a rally a couple of Sundays ago on July 24th. It was hosted by County Supervisor David Canepa. We had over 100 activists, former patrons in attendance, as well as about a half a dozen elected leaders who came and spoke and supported us. And then, just a couple of days ago, Supervisor Canepa and I co-authored an op-ed that appeared in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and also in Everything South City and Indy Bay. So it was republished in a couple of other papers as well. And our op-ed was a rebuttal to, I'm going out of order here, but we had a rally and then Sutter offered a boilerplate response filled with inaccuracies and platitudes. And Supervisor Canepa and I responded with this rebuttal. And our main points in our rebuttal are that this facility is invaluable for chronic pain management for pregnant women, children with special needs, seniors, disabled individuals. It was financed initially, but with $4 million of community donations, which today is equivalent to $7.2 million in today's money. Sutter has repeatedly said that the facility has been closed due to concerns with COVID. However, we have, in our op-ed, we have a quote from Helen Godinez from County Health who explained that healthcare facilities were expressly exempt during COVID from closure. So there is no reason why this facility should have been closed. And I'm here tonight to encourage you once again to please agendize passing a resolution supporting our cause. We've emailed you a template. Be happy to offer any other guidance about what we're looking for for this resolution. Currently, last night, the Hillsboro City Council passed a resolution. We are now, we now have, there are 10 government agencies that have passed resolutions supporting our cause. So I really encourage you to join with the others in doing so. And one other very important point that I forgot to mention is that the Peninsula Healthcare District has offered to fully finance any remodels, operational costs, to reopen the facility. And Sutter has declined this offer. So the funding is there. We just need to, you know, continue to put pressure on them, and we'd appreciate if you could, if you could offer your support as well. Thank you, thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you for the public comment. Consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Is there any City Council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar items, F1, adoption of a resolution to continue conducting meetings remotely. F2, receive and file the investment portfolio as of June 30th of 2022. And F3, adoption of a resolution executing an agreement. And forms required by the Bureau of Reclamation following the notice of award for a grant, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, F1 through F3. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second on the table to approve the consent calendar?
I move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk Heron, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Combs and a second by City Council Member Mueller to approve the consent calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion?
Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs?
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller?
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Woolison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is G1, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.70, creating a process for obtaining film permits. To introduce the item is City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and members of the City Council. I'm Judy Hereon, the City Clerk. The item before you this evening is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance adding chapter 8.70, film permits to the Menlo Park Municipal Code. Staff is requesting the following updates to be included in the ordinance after receiving City Council public, or City Council and public input. These edits are available on our updated agenda on our website, as well as in the City Council chambers. First update is to the small operations definition, and this is to include the unaffiliated event organizer attendees in small operations. And the second update is to add expressive activity exclusion. And expressive activity means the conduct or sole or principal object of which is the expression of opinion, views, or ideas protected by the First Amendment. And I will be getting into more detail about these updates at the next slide, but wanted everyone to see what the changes were on screen. So for film permits, required for use on public property only. What does not require a film permit consists of activities or events on private property, news media operations, small operations, which broken down is filming activity with fewer than 25 persons, does not require the closure of any city streets, sidewalks, or public property, does not obstruct free passage of pedestrians or vehicles, does not involve drones, does not involve pyrotechnics, simulated or actual gunfire, and non-domesticated animals, does not require the use of city resources. And the update that I provided in the previous slide is persons engaged in filming activity that are unaffiliated with the event organizers may make use of this exception. And this should resolve any issues or questions that have come up about someone showing up in an event and just wanting to record for Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, things of that nature. Those folks would be able to fall under this exemption, so a film permit would not be required. Also exempt from film permits are filming activities conducted at a studio, which is defined as a fixed place of business, still photography, city-produced government-access films. And again, the new update of expressive activity involving less than 150 people as defined by the special event ordinance is exempt from a film permit. Expressive activity involving more than 150 people shall be subject to the special events permit. However, nothing in this film permitting ordinance shall require persons or entities to obtain a film permit for expressive activities. The proposed ordinance gives the Public Works Director or designee the authority to review and issue or deny film permits. The city will need to update Acela's infrastructure, which is the city's permitting system, and coordinate enforcement if needed with the police department. And this does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions or open to public comments.
Councilmember Mueller, do you have a clarifying question?
I do.
Please go ahead.
My question is, would a film permit be required for, if, for instance, if example, a real estate agent wanted to go ahead and use a drone to film a property?
So are we talking about a property on private property?
Yes.
No film permit would be required. It does not extend past public property.
So if, so, okay, so if a, if, let me ask you this then, flip side, is if there's a family with kids, and the kid has a drone with a camera on it, which most have now, and they're at a picnic in a public park, and the child were to put that drone into the air and start taking video of his family, or his sister's soccer game, or whatever it may be, would that require a film permit?
So I see our city attorney on the screen. Did you want to fill that question there?
Yeah, I'm happy to know that that activity also would not involve a film permit because it wouldn't involve 25 or more people filming in a public space, even if the film included 25 people because they were incidentally filmed in the background. The small operations exemption applies where there were 25 people gathered for the purpose of filmmaking.
Okay, I get it. So the 25 people is actually like the film crew? Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
That's right.
So I now have a clarifying question. City Attorney Doherty, the 25 people are the film crew, or it's like if there is 25 people involved? You're on mute.
My apologies. Yeah, so the small operations exemption applies when the filming activity involves fewer than 25 people does not, and does not it, where 25 people are incidentally accidentally filmed or filmed in the background, the small operations provision would apply so as to exempt the exempt the filming from the purview of the film permit ordinance, which was said in unnecessarily confusing way by me. So if there are 25 people or more that are accidentally filmed, that would not trigger a film permit because the film permit is, I'm sorry, the filming is not occurring for purposes of filming more than 20, or involving more than 25 people.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G1, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.70, creating a process for obtaining film permits, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and City Clerk and City Attorney. Thank you very much for presenting this item. I am a Menlo Park resident, and I did send in a note to the City Council and made some comments about some items that I thought were not intended to be impacted by this ordinance, and I'm pretty sure that the language here now clearly excludes them. So I'm involved in a variety of different, you know, civic and community education activities. And one example of a kind of activity that is done extremely routinely is to have community education. So for example, the Climate Resilient Communities Organization has some really interesting presentation material about climate justice and the environmental justice element. And if they were doing an educational event and they had 30 people at the educational event, it would be possible to, you know, use a cellphone camera and record it and then share it on the internet for people who weren't able to attend an event. So I think that would be covered under that expressive activity exemption. And for example, if Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition is doing a ride of some new piece of the Bay Trail and someone videos it using Facebook or TikTok, you know, that would be exempt also. So if there's, it sounds to me like those things are covered. And if there's any clarification needed to make sure of that, that would be welcome. And the last circumstance I was thinking about in listening to this is if there's a group of people at a birthday party that is larger than 25 people, you know, which does happen, and people are gathering at a birthday party at a park, and people film each other, which is using their phones, which they do now, would welcome any explanation about like how that would be exempted because it sure doesn't seem to be in the interest of the city in having any kind of ordinance against people that happen to be taking cellphone videos of each other at birthday parties. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on our regular business item, G1. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. And I was, would City Attorney Doherty please respond to the questions and confirm Ms. Adina Levin's questions about what is involved in filming such as a birthday party?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the question. So I will frame, frame my answer with that this ordinance is intended to capture large filming operations. And the difficulty in drafting this ordinance is one that we need to comply with the various First Amendment and constitutional limitations on free speech rights. And, and what is proving to be more difficult is that technological advances and the law have not synced up over the last few years. And so there are numerous constitutional protections that individuals have that don't necessarily sync up in terms of regulating with technological advances such as TikTok or Instagram, as Ms. Levin was mentioning. So the revisions that we made to the ordinance tonight are intended to do a better job of addressing First Amendment rights. So when people are engaged in expressive activities, a film permit is not required. A film permit may be, I'm sorry, a special events permit may be required if the expressive activity involves more than 150 people, and that's consistent with a number of US Supreme Court cases on expressive activities. We also added a provision, I'm wondering if Judy, you could put the slide up with the revised language so we can all look at it concurrently. But the parties, one is hopefully addressed by the revision that Judy is going to show momentarily to some, to the definition of small operation, which says that for purposes of the chapter, persons engaging in filming activities that are unaffiliated with event organizers may make use of this exception. So a birthday party, I think studio birthday party is not associated with an event organizer, and therefore would not be subject to the film permit requirement.
Thank you. Are there any City Council questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have another question of a situation for the city attorney. So my kids are having bar and bat mitzvahs, and event organizers being the parents may hire a videographer. That, so that's a person affiliated with the event organizer, but they're filming guests. So would that, if it were an event over 100, you're on mute. If it were an event over 150 people, that'd be a large bar of a mitzvah, or a wedding or something. So would that need a film permit?
If the event was on public property, then possibly yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
If it's on private property, then no, it wouldn't. And, and the reason for the public property versus private property distinction is one, constitutional rights related to use of private property, and two, so that when larger events are occurring in public spaces, city staff wants the ability to ensure that safety, appropriate safety mechanisms are in place and traffic mechanisms are in place. And so that's what city staff would be reviewing when issuing a permit.
But that, if you were having a big party, let's say at Burgess Park with 151 people, that would be triggering the special events permit anyway, so there'd already be involvement of permitting and whatnot?
That's right, yeah. So that's a really good point. So the special events permit separately that the city passed two meetings ago specifies that where a special events permit is required, a film permit will not separately be required. So, yeah, thank you for clarifying that, that these film permits are only triggered where a special event permit is not required.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you so much.
Bar and bat mitzvah in Burgess Park would likely trigger the special event permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, is there any other discussion? Is there a motion and a second on the table? Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm happy to move. Let's see, to waive the first reading and do the ordinance.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk Heron, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Woolison, and a second by City Council Member Taylor to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 8.70, creating a process for obtaining film permits. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs?
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller?
Yep.
City Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Woolison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next business item is G2, direction on draft ordinance for preserving parkland. To introduce the item is City Clerk Judy Heron.
Hello again. And thank you again, Mayor Nash, members of the City Council. This item before you is direction on a draft ordinance for preserving park lands. Wanted to provide a little background on this item. On September 21st of 2021, the City Council considered an agenda item to provide direction on drafting an ordinance and ballot measure for City Council consideration on preserving parkland. The City Council discussed the item but did not provide any direction at that time. On October 23rd, 2021, the City Council also considered the topic of park preservation and requested a future agenda item to consider the identification of parks in the municipal code as a way of clarifying and dedic, way of clarifying the dedication of parkland, which in turn would provide greater protections for preservation of existing open space. On May 24th of this year, the City Council directed staff to draft an ordinance dedicating all city parks and closing any loopholes for rezoning of park use. The direct action taken from the video and minutes of that May 24th meeting was to direct staff to draft an ordinance dedicating all city parks, close any loopholes for rezoning of park use, create a procedural requirement in the ordinance that government use exception of park land will require an advisory vote of the public before a City Council could exercise that use exception, and to define parks as green, open, and recreational spaces, and to exclude parking lots and the Burgess Park Civic Center structures in that definition. And that motion did pass three to two. There, one moment, I've gone too far. Okay, so here are some highlights of the draft ordinance in front of the City Council this evening. It protects parks and open spaces and maintains their designation as open space and precludes the city from allowing parks to be used for other purposes or convert And precludes the city from allowing parks to be used for other purposes or converted to other uses. It prohibits the conversion of lands designated as open space conservation or OSC within the city. It also prohibits recreational lands owned or controlled by the city. In the public facilities district from being converted to other uses. In order to further the general plan policy LU dash 6.5. And ensure parks and parkland within the city are zoned appropriately. And in conformance with the general plan, the proposed ordinance would rezone Seminary Oaks Park from single family suburban residential. To OSC and rezone Sharon Hills Park from residential estate suburban residential combining to OSC. This ordinance also to further policy LU 6.5. Would amend the general plan to redesignate Seminary Oaks Park and Sharon Hills Park. From low density residential land use designation to parks and recreation land use designation. And redesignate from very low density residential land use designation to parks and recreation land use designation. Staff is requesting the following updates to be included in the draft ordinance after carefully reviewing the May 24 direction received. The first revision states that the conversion of parkland won't occur without an advisory measure. And the second revision states that parking lots and Burgess Park municipal buildings are not subject to the prohibition on conversion of parkland. If the city council wishes to proceed with this ordinance, the next step would be the next step would for staff bringing this to the planning commission for input and direction. Following planning commission's contributions, the ordinance will be reintroduced at a city council meeting. Wouldn't be reintroduced, it would be introduced at a city council meeting typically as a public hearing item. It would be adopted at a subsequent regularly scheduled city council meeting typically as a consent item. And then take effect 30 days after adoption. And that does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or open for public comment.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Mueller.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it. I don't have any clarifying questions.
Thank you. City Clerk Heron, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G2, which is direction on draft ordinance for preserving parkland. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin, followed by Brian Kissel.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Adina Levin, Menlo Park President. And I don't have any issues with the idea of protecting parks. Don't don't feel that it's a real urgent issue either, but it it it. You know, like keeping parks as parks seems like a good thing. And I'm also glad that what is currently before the council is. Does have exemptions from for surface parking lots. And public buildings that that the Burgess complex. The process that the city went through with this round of the housing element. Was a challenge. It's really hard to find places to have the. Affordable housing and especially deeply affordable housing that we need. And there's certain. Locations that, you know, it's not going to get easier over time. So there's certain locations where it is easy to imagine. So for example, at the Little House. Senior area, there's a parking lot and want the the city wanting at some point, you know, 15 years in the future, maybe to have. Senior housing and using some of that parking lot for senior housing. So I'm glad that that is exemption is there. But I do have a question about what is meant and covered by public facilities. And whether that is covering public buildings that could in the future conceivably. Want a share, be beneficial for a shared use for affordable housing. And if so, would want some consideration about what those are and and making sure that we are not overprotecting. As parkland places that are buildings on city owned land that may. Benefit from a changing use, particularly a changing use to affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Brian Kissel, and this will also be the final call for public comment on item G2.
So Brian. Brian Kissel, do I need to do something to get started?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. Thanks very much, the city council and the city attorney for the work on this. As indicated earlier, this started in September last year. And so. Really excited to see the progress and I think it it looks really promising and represents. A lot of good back and forth discussion among a lot of stakeholders to come up with something that we think will. Provide the necessary protection for our parks. I just had one question on the draft ordinance highlights that I didn't understand. And maybe somebody can help clarify for me. The the last two bullet points about rezoning Seminary Oaks and. Let's see. And Sharon Hills from residential estate suburban residential. So are those places not parks today? And so we're now officially making parks out of what places were being used as parks but weren't. Properly designated. That's the first question. The second question is. On the last bullet point, I don't understand the the general plan modification. For Seminary Oaks and Sharon Oaks to low density, but then it follows on to redesignate as very low density. So is it a two step process? She go first to low density and then very low density. I just didn't understand the the intent of that last bullet point. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mayor Nash, seeing no further hands. You may continue.
Thank you. Are there a city clerk Heron or a city attorney Doherty? Could you please respond to the questions?
I'd be happy to respond to those. I'll start with Mr. Kissel's comments. As to the rezoning. Language. Yes, you are, Mr. Kissel is correct. The the properties are currently not zoned. The the properties that Sharon Hills Park and Seminary Oaks Park. Are located on are currently not zoned open space. And instead are zoned. R1, which means that park use of those sites as a park is nonconforming with the underlying zoning. That does not mean the parks are not allowed because they exist on site. And conversion of the parks would still be subject to the various state laws that. Limit a city's ability to convert parks to other uses. But the rezoning is intended to sort of clean up the uses that are on site and zone them correctly. As to the general plan designation, I think your point is well taken and it's actually just. A matter of redrafting that section a little clearer. And so I will note your point and probably restructure the way that that section is drafted to make it clear that the. Zoning designations would change from low density and very low for each of the parks. And change them, the designations would be changed to parks of recreation. As to Ms. Levin's comments, I'm I'm not actually completely following. The need for a definition of public facility, but perhaps the question. Is directed at needing to define. Excuse me, give me a second. Civic center buildings in Burgess Park. And if that's the case. Then yeah, I think that that's a a smart addition that we should consider making. In the definition of parks to make it clear. What civic center buildings in Burgess Park are which are not subject to the ordinance's prohibition on rezoning. I'm sorry, the ordinance is prohibition on converting to a different municipal use.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I just at the outset for my colleagues do recall that we indicated that the parking lots would be excluded. We agreed to that to get our third vote that evening. So I want to make sure that that is reflected in the ordinance. And I do appreciate that it was identified that the zoning needs change on Sharon Hills Park. And also on Seminary Oaks Park. And so. I think that's wonderful that that can be cleared up. That's exactly the type of thing we wanted to check with respect to all the parks. And then. The only thing question I have is for the city attorney was with respect to. The question. So this ordinance would accept structures on the parks, like bathrooms?
Yeah, so in the definition of. Parks and parkland, we have included programs as well as uses in support of recreational opportunities. So that would mean that bathrooms, storage sheds. Other recreation related uses that occur on a park site would also be. Subject to the prohibition on conversion to other uses. So they would be quote protected in the same way that parks are.
Great. Okay, so they they are protected. So that's fine. So with that understanding, then I'll go ahead and 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 pass. But I did want to go ahead and concede the point to my colleagues about the parking lots. So parking lots. Although I would protect them, I it would the agreement was that they would be protected. So. Fair enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Other comments? So I have a question how this. Relates to the ballot measure which would not allow residential use to be re-zoned. And I'm wondering, would we go ahead and do this? And then depending what happens with the ballot measure, this would either. Be undone or since it did not precede the April timeline.
I'm happy to answer that. Yes, that's exactly right. So the zoning measure, the zoning initiative that's currently on the November ballot. For voter approval would prohibit the rezoning. Of Sharon Hills Park and Seminary Oaks Park from R1 to open space. And that's because the measure would prohibit rezoning any single family R1 designated sites in the city. As with other city work, you know, we proceed to a certain extent. In the manner that we would, but for the measure being on the ballot, but of course pay deference to the measure if it passes. Which means that yes, if the measure passes, then the rezoning would be invalidated. The timing as between the planning commission for second reading and 30 day effective period is such that. We will likely not get through to the effective date before we know the results of the ballot measure. So that will, timing will probably work in our favor. So that we will ultimately not publish and make the rezoning effective if the measure passed.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I see Council Vice Mayor Wilson has a question and Councilmember Mueller. Was your question, actually Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. To follow up, City Attorney Doherty on the mayor's question then. So if the ballot measure passes and we are unable to rezone Sharon Hills Park. And Seminary Oaks Park, then those two parks will not hopefully be protected as the other parks. Will be under the ordinance?
No, again, because the rezoning, we are rezoning in a way in. The the suggested rezoning piece of this ordinance is to clean up. Missed, miss zoned properties. Those two parks should be zoned open space. They would still be protected because they would still be considered parks or parkland under the ordinance and therefore wouldn't be able to be. Rezoned without following state law procedures. I'm sorry, wouldn't be able to be converted to a different use without following state law procedures for doing it. And under this ordinance, it would require a advisory vote of the people to convert them to a different use.
Okay, so regardless of whether they remain zoned R1 or are rezoned to the more appropriate zoning designation.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding, so I want to acknowledge Councilmember Mueller's concession of the parking lots. And regarding the buildings, so I know as written now, it talks about the Burgess buildings. So I have a question about that and then a follow up. So the footprint of the buildings that exist now. If there was to be like a remodeling of different buildings. And you know, an architect wanted to, you know, add five feet on the footprint or whatever. At what point does it encroach on our definition of? Does the exclusion no longer apply because it's then encroaching on the open space recreational green parkland? And I'm not suggesting anyone's planning on doing that. I just want to make sure we're thinking through the consequences and all of the. The little pieces here.
Yeah, so as drafted, the ordinance wouldn't allow conversion of recreational spaces. And it also would not allow. Properties in the public facilities district, which includes the. Or I will, I will just confirm, I'll have the city manager correct me if I'm mistaken. It would include the facilities, the city hall, real in other related facilities. Which are currently zoned public facilities. Also, can it be converted to a different municipal purpose? So if the open space areas in Burgess were to be. The proposal was to convert those from open recreational space. To a. Civic center that would likely be impermissible under the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's that's not a scenario I'm anticipating. What I'm anticipating is if. If if a future council and again, we're finalizing the housing element and none of this is in the housing element. So we're talking like eight, 10 years down the line. So most of us, if not all of us, won't even be here then. I'm really thinking for the future, if like the parking lot. Next to council chambers and council chambers is going to be like rebuilt. To maintain council chambers and add back some parking, but it's desired to go up a story or two to add, you know, housing or another use. At what point, first of all, is that permissible? And like, yeah, I guess is that. And like, yeah, I guess is that permissible, excuse me? And then at what point is the, let's say, there's like the bench area outside council chambers? If the redesigned council chamber building ends up being, you know, a few feet wider than the original one, when does that start becoming, getting into the open space issue?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the answer to that right now. That would probably require some coordination with community development, but expanding the existing municipal facilities wouldn't, is not implicated by the ordinance as it's currently drafted. So if you were to expand City Hall into the bench area, the bench area would likely be considered part of, you know, ancillary or supportive of City Hall, and you could expand into that area.
Okay, I guess, I guess my, my desire with this would be to I'm really thinking down the road here, especially the ballot measure report. If the ballot measure passes, the city will be further limited on our ability in the future to potentially add housing and affordable housing. And it even mentions in the ballot measure report that open space, which is why I think it's a really great thing that we're, you know, protecting open space. But again, I want to be clear on what actually is open space and what is area that's a little more gray or even not at all open space, that a future council, given whatever circumstances they're facing, may need to, you know, add senior housing. So my preference would be to, however it needs to be drafted, to make sure that the buildings on the Burgess campus can be you know, repurposed or added to a use. I don't want to take away, but let's say, I don't know, yeah, I don't want to take away recreational space. It would be more additive. And then I'd also be interested in, you know, the other, the senior center, you know, Little House, potentially the co-op building, Rosner House, you know, preschool, all of these municipal buildings that we have. At some point, they will likely reach the end of their life and there'll be some consideration. And land is so valuable, municipal land and public land. So I just don't want to paint us into a corner where that can't even be considered. So that would be my position. So, thank you. I'll listen to my colleagues' thing.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I appreciate all the questioning, but it has brought forward a loophole that I'm not excited about, that if you expand the size of the existing building, that you can, you can eat up open space and parkland. And so what I'd like to ask is that, that, that we figure out some sort of reasonable buffer on that, but it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem congruent to me that we're saying, well, you can't plop down a new building in the middle, but you can have one, a different building become an amoeba and grow into the parkland. So I think there needs to be some sort of set boundaries on that. And so I'd ask that, 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 I understand that there needs to be discussion, but so I, I guess we should probably have my colleagues weigh in if they agree on that. I think there should be a buffer, a buffer zone of how much the buildings can expand outward into the parks. Otherwise, that could be, that could be quite a loophole. So I think there probably needs to be, I think, I think we need to define that within the ordinance. And if that were the case, so the rest of the, I guess it's probably coming back to us unless we can figure out what the, what that defined area is. I'll agree with the accepting the parking lots. Again, changing the general plan designation, which was a good catch, Mr. Kessel, thank you, from R1 to, from R1 to park or conservation of the space in the general plan, I think is an important thing to be done. So the only question I had city attorney is the question about, why does it, why do we have to wait until December to for this to become effective, besides the fact now that we have, besides the fact asked to come back?
It likely won't get on a Planning Commission agenda until September, and then it takes two council readings, and then it's 30 days to be effective. So that means my quick math puts us to yeah, potentially end of, end of November before it's effective, and we'll know the results of the November 8th election that evening or November night. We don't, we don't have to wait. The, the, I only raised that point because ordinances take a very long time to become effective under the government code. And my guess is that the effective date of this will be after we know the results of the, or very right around the date that we know the results of the initiative measure.
Okay. All right. Does anyone, do any of my colleagues want to talk about what they would think would be a reasonable buffer? Should we wait for that another day after getting some advice from planning staff?
Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I have a question not about the buffer. So City Attorney Doherty, whatever we do here, correct me if that in January or February, it cannot be undone with three votes of the city council?
Well, not exactly, because the, like, setting aside the initiative measure.
Yeah, setting aside the initiative.
Okay. The council could always repeal this ordinance. So this ordinance requires a advisory vote, and it requires that the council, it prohibits the council from converting certain land in open space and public facilities district, but it doesn't.
All those stipulations can be undone with three votes of a future city council, correct?
Agreed.
Okay. Given that, I, I, I was supportive of this in the extent to which I thought it made an important point about preserving parklands, and I'm willing to do that. But I am not supportive of going through and investing every, all of this time to close every loophole, to go through every permutation that, that can make this rock solid. Because in the future, if three council people feel that this doesn't work for them, they can just throw it out. They can just vote it all away. And so I don't know if we have to worry about like building buffers and limits, because if it, if it, if it, if it goes up against the priorities of a future council in any way, then they only need three votes to make it all go away. So I think continuing to invest in debate and discuss and close every single loophole, at one point, at some point, it becomes an exercise in diminishing returns. I think it's important to make the point that parks are worth preserving. But again, when there are three votes that can make it all go away, I don't know if it's worth all of the additional effort to, to make sure that, that it is, it is, it is, it is rock solid.
Councilmember Mueller, and I do see Vice Mayor Wilson after you.
Yeah, so I appreciate what you're saying, Councilmember Combs, and I can be acceptable of that, but I do want to try to make so, because as in all things, when that day comes, the council will say, well, they had the opportunity to put in a buffer and they didn't. And so though, I personally think a council will, if they want to do it, look for the loophole first before trying to repeal it. And so what I'd say tonight is I would want to try to make the motion and say, I'll, I'll agree to a ten-foot, ten-foot buffer around the proximity of the current buildings. So that, and then if a council doesn't want to do that, they can just repeal the ordinance, but at least we've put something down to say, well, we our intent was not that you could just grow a building outwards 100 feet. So I think by putting some sort of limitation on that, we can capture that intention. Legislative intent is important because that will be the argument when that day comes.
Vice Mayor Wilson and then Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. And I actually raised my hand after the first time Councilmember Mueller spoke. And he was asking if anyone agreed about creating a buffer, and I absolutely agree. And my, that was why I brought it up, because I don't want any perception of there being like an amoeba or trying to like encroach bit by bit from being really intentional. And I was giving, you know, the five-foot example, but I just want to make sure that there's not some like, I think 10 feet might be, I would look to staff to make a recommendation. I'm not an architect. I don't know, you know, when you're rebuilding. I just know having gone through a remodel, like sometimes you have, you need a little push and pull. I don't know if it's like a percentage. Anyway, and to Councilmember Combs' point, yeah, I, I mean, we, we make policy, and if we're going to make it, I'd like to make it as, as good as we can. I agree, we should try to move on as soon as we can from this item. But I think it's important to some people and yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, I think Councilmember Mueller and I are actually on the same page with this, and I'm, I'm ready to move on. Thanks.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And, and I said this before, while I'm on council, I have no intention of building on our parks. My question is, what, what land does a city control but does not own? Maybe I misinterpreted the staff report, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, I'll, I will defer to community development on that exact question, but the city manager, I did talk about the possibility of the city controlling open space that it may not own in the future. The example that most immediately came to mind was if Signature and Meta build an elevated park as a part of a little village project, should it be approved? It has not yet been determined that the city will own that park, and so just to cover all bases, we added controlled. I don't, I can't speak to what open space the city currently controls, but does it own?
Councilmember, actually Vice Mayor. That was Councilmember Taylor. Did you have anything more? Okay, Councilmember Mueller.
All right, so we're just providing direction tonight, right? So we're not voting tonight, so, because you're going to finish the draft. So, so you turn it already?
Yeah, that's right. So, you know, some of the topics that you're discussing are the topics that we would like direction on to find, to fine-tune the language of this ordinance. I, I don't think it's completely ready for prime time, but we wanted to present it to you so you sort of have a sense of what we're working on, and you can give us feedback on how you'd like to see it revised, if at all.
Okay, so do you, do we make a motion then for what the direction will be? Oh, sorry, I didn't, sorry, Mayor Nash, go ahead.
So I had a question about the converting to a different municipal purpose. And what if what if we decide to redo the Burgess Pool? We decide to, is it, is that considered one purpose there with the locker rooms and the pool if, just would it go for, to have, need to go for a vote if it exceeded with athletic use? If we change things around? I'm just thinking of what is happening at the MPCC where we moved around the pool to make it more functional. And just would, had we had something like this in place, would that have required a vote by the by the public? Where we basically took, it's still the same use, it's still the same general pool size, but the footprint is different. In other words, just making sure we've know what the consequences are.
Yeah, so no, it's a good question. As drafted, the and your, I think your hypothetical doesn't involve opens, doesn't involve parks, it involves municipal
Correct.
Buildings and services and would likely be governed by the section of the ordinance that is governing public facilities district land. And that section just limits the city from converting from any municipal purpose to any non-municipal purpose. So I don't believe under the way that the current the ordinance is currently drafted, that any of your hypotheticals could be realized. Meaning, yes, you could add to the pool. Yes, you could convert Ariaga from a gymnastics-oriented space to a ice hockey rink. That would all be permissible.
Excellent. So that was part of my next question was if we decided to change a soccer field to baseball or baseball to soccer, or move the skate park, all of that would be permissible?
Yes.
Again, not, not changing the use of a park, but, well, changing the use but not changing the overall function of the park, but changing how specific areas are used.
Yes, I, I think that it's, I'm glad you're asking this question because I do think that a soccer field or a baseball field might constitute a park or parkland under the current definition of park. And we do prohibit converting parks to a different municipal purpose. So we do, we will want to close that loophole to make sure that we aren't assuming the rest of the council agrees with you, that we aren't limiting the city's ability to convert a soccer field to a baseball diamond.
Thank you. And I want to also agree with what Councilmember Taylor said, and I don't believe any of us on council, I certainly will say for myself that I have never, I believe parks are incredibly important, especially as we get more density in the city. We need more open space and space for people to go, and have no intention of converting parkland to anything but parkland. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash. I just want to add, again, I was supportive of this effort. I was supportive of a more comprehensive protection when it comes to public facilities and, and, and parks or open space than what we, what we landed at. But I don't think the issue is, is, is when I say we, we cannot sort of predict against every permutation is, is an issue of good or bad policy or making policy right. I think it's understanding what you're doing. And, and I think what we're doing here is, is, is not really making policy as much as, as, is sort of being clear about the value of, for this council of, of, of parks and a wooliness to sort of in some way have that written down. Written down and, and sort of obviously understood by, by residents and understood by, by future councils. But again, I would just say that like, this, this isn't some in stone policy, right? This isn't that something happens and then it's, it's like reversible. And there are things that we do hear that, that happens that are reversible. That there, there's clear monies expended, things that are built, things that are prioritized, and that is clear, so sort of us making a decision about our resources in a moment which can't be retracted. Again, here we are, we are earmarking our, the value we think that parks are to our community. And again, I, I think that that's important. Like I said, I would prefer a more comprehensive definition, but I, I do think we should be clear here that at any point in the future, it doesn't take much a huge amount of votes on this body in the future to, to make all of the permutations just sort of go away if it, if it goes up against the direction that council wants, wants to go in. So with that, I, I won't, won't, I just wanted to make it clear where, where I stood.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I just real quickly, just want to, I'll respond just real quick to just a couple of things, and then hopefully just make a move, motion on direction. I actually do think that what we're doing tonight is more than just doing something reversible with all, with huge more than just doing something reversible with all, with huge respect to my colleagues. And it's more about whether or not we would do this as a council, and so just historically speaking, there was a document that went out from the city that said, in this housing element, parks were under consideration for housing, it was a written document that money was spent on, on, went, spent on, that went to every household in this city. So the resident concern here was, and was valid, like, it was there in front of them. Uh, and so whether or not the council would do it or not, we told them that we were considering it. The second thing I'd say is, while it is true that a council, any council can, or any legislative body can repeal an ordinance, we are governments that are, that actually, and, and a system that is ruled, that is also in many respects ruled by ordinance, there's all sorts of civil ordinances, there's criminal ordinances that are on the books that any legislative body could go ahead and pull back, but the reason why you put them there is because, uh, it's a statement of values in a community of what is acceptable and what isn't. And so you're creating a roadblock, basically, for a future body to say if they decide they don't want to do it, fine, they have, any legislative body can do that, but they're gonna have to, when they do it, they're gonna have to do it transparently, and they're gonna have to answer to the public about why they did it. And if we don't, then these things can just happen in the course of doing business, and someone might not realize that they're, that, that, that once upon a time a council went ahead and said, no, this isn't gonna be acceptable. And so I think it's very worthy what we're doing tonight, uh, what we're doing tonight, and the path we're going down, uh, especially as we see, uh, that I think in the history of the peninsula, we're gonna see more and more threat to parks and open space, it's just one of those things that's going to happen. Uh, and so to be one of those bodies that said, no, we actually went and captured this in a legislative process, in an ordinance, and, and to put that down in writing, I think is important. So with that, uh, what I do want to say, uh, here is, I'm gonna go ahead and move direction on this, that we, uh, accept uh, the document as it has been brought to us, except that, uh, an exception for parking lots be included, that the next time it comes to us, it comes to us with a recommendation for a buffer, buffer zone from staff that we can go ahead and look at and debate that night in approval, and that the general plan designation be included uh, so that it be changed, uh, from our, from, from low density to just really parks and, and conservation, both for Seminary Oaks and Sharon Park Hills, and the exact language of that, Ms. Doherty, I, I don't know the exact language, language, but, but the intent of that is that that general plan designation would be moved to reflect as such that they are parks. And so, uh, I'll make that, that motion now. Um, just, is there a second?
Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, um, I have a, a question for you, Councilmember Mueller, friendly amendment. Um, the, so right now, I believe the amended, the, the amended ordinance has verbiage about Burgess Park buildings. Um, I would like it to also include the other buildings, um, I don't know if I need to, to list them out, I don't need to include bathrooms, I get that that's really connected to residential, I, I've been to parks. Um, but senior centers, um, Roser House, um, preschool, ju- just, um, to make sure that, that the different parks that have the buildings with the buffer concept, um, are also included. And then I just also wanted to acknowledge, and, um, if you can include in your motion to direct staff to look at that thing that, um, uh, Mayor Nash was looking at, so if in the future, it's, it's vogue to have more baseball fields and soccer fields, um, like right now pickleball, I know Mr. Kissel is a big pickleball fan, um, looking to convert potentially some tennis courts to pickleball courts, um, that were not constrained, um, and that there's flexibility in there, so I, I hope that made sense, and if you would consider those, I'd be happy to second it.
Yeah, I absolutely don't want to constrain the recreational uses, so yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, then, I'm happy to second.
City Clerk Karen, would you please, uh, repeat the motion and call for a vote?
Thank you, Mayor Nash, I will repeat the motion as, um, I caught it, I may turn to our city attorney just to confirm that the language we needed in there. So I have a motion by City Councilmember Mueller, and a second by Vice Mayor Willison to accept the ordinance as amended today. Also include a buffer zone for future public facilities. Uh, the general plan designation for Seminary Oaks and Sharon Hills as parks and recreation land use. Include all city-owned buildings on city parks, and close the loophole related to sports fields. And so first I'll turn to our city attorney and make sure that I captured.
Thank you, yeah, that's, um, consistent with what I heard, I would turn to our city manager and community development director, um, as to whether or not they have enough information on, um, what other buildings other than those in Burgess area, Civic Center area would be subject to the buffer. Because they will be providing that language for the ordinance.
So it's, just for, uh, having to chime in, I also see, um, Councilmember Mueller has his light on, so. Okay, so I, I, yes, I would appreciate, uh, some clarity, so I think I heard, um, Vice Mayor Willis saying that it would not be applicable to, to restrooms, so that, that, that was one identified use, and I know that she enumerated some other rest, some other, uh, buildings, uses on, on various sites. So part of me wouldn't mind, like, just double checking, like, from a park perspective, because we do have the inventory at the, at the end of the staff report that I go kind of park by park to, to list some of them, I just want to make sure, like Bedwell Bayfront Park does have the a structure at the, at the back end of the park, so that, that would, could be, uh, redone. Uh, there's Willow Oaks Park has the, uh, childcare facility. Nealon has, as was identified, Little, Little House, and, uh, Co-op Rosner House is located at Lyle Park, so those are the various structures that are not restrooms at various park facilities.
Councilmember Mueller.
Can I just make a suggestion that we would just include in the motion that you'd bring back a list of those structures, because I know myself personally, I'm gonna want to go out and visit those sites and take a look at the list and look at the recommended buffer. So, because if there's not a lot of park space already at, in a park, I'm gonna say, I'm not excited about the buffer there. So, uh, if there's, if there's just a list, we can go through it the night of adoption and figure it out.
Yes, we, we provide the list.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, um, I realize I forgot to ask, um, one more question of the city attorney. So if we, I just want to make sure if a municipal building, we talked about, you know, the gymnastics being converted into an ice rink, and no, we're not doing that. Um, but if for, but if, um, would, so as long as it's a municipal use, it would be permissible? Would an affordable housing, like for, um, seniors at a senior center, would, would that be considered a municipal use and included in that?
Give me a second. I don't think the, as drafted, the ordinance a- addresses that, um, actually, no, yeah, uh, sorry, excuse, excuse me, I'm having to think on the fly with all your very good hypotheticals. Municipal purposes currently defined as activities, uses and services operated by or at the direction of the city. So if the city were operating or managing the housing project, which would require substantial hurdles if it's an affordable project, um, then yes, um, the city could convert one municipal use to that municipal use. But if it was a housing developer coming in, then no, that would be prohibited for existing buildings, you're on mute.
But if the city were to dedicate, uh, or to donate the land, like, the parking lots that we're considering, um, doing in downtown, so if we were to, to offer, if we were to redo a, a Burgess building, again, not in the next decade, um, and, like, a second story or a third story was gonna be built, so that would, is there any way to add that as a possibility in the ordinance, I guess is what I'm getting at, and not to preclude that?
So add that expansions for non-municipal purposes are permissible on public facilities?
I don't want it to be like a, um, like a, like a rest, I, 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 I mean, my intention is um, I'm at a loss for words here, um. I, I guess I'm, I'm worried that future councils are gonna have a harder time, um, figuring out where to put affordable housing, and that if we have underutilized municipal buildings that have no land cost, that I just don't want, um, it to be not possible with this. So is there a way to?
Yeah, I mean, it can be revised.
Or can you look into it, or when it comes back?
Yeah, I mean, I think as
Mueller is amendable to, um, having that come back as a option in a future, in the future ordinance, that would be great.
So, I'll go ahead and accept that as a friendly amendment, if it is, uh, if it is, uh, presented as an option, as not, as an option to be included that evening, but not necessarily so that there's a draft ordinance, and then here's the, here's the additional language that you could, you could approve tonight if you want to do this, because I want to take a look at it and understand it.
That's totally fair, I want to take a look at it, too. I'm just trying to, like, think six steps ahead, as I know you are, too, so thank you.
Councilmember Combs.
I'm no longer supportive of this effort, uh, uh, city manager, uh, um, is, um, what, what's happening here, have, have any, and again, just to be clear, I'm no longer supportive of this effort irrespective. Um, would this have any impact on the, the proposed renovations for Willow Oaks Park, I, I just want to a- anything that has been discussed here?
We are, um, definitely thinking of the proposed renovations to Willow Oaks Park as we're contemplating this ordinance, and we have not come across anything yet, so that's something that we're, we're looking to be cognizant of, so thus far, no, I don't think I've heard of anything tonight that, um, would, so.
To be clear, I just don't know what's going on here anymore. I just don't, I, I've, I've been lost by all of the exceptions, the permutations, the, uh, y- you know, the, the variables, and so I just can't be supportive, because I don't know what's going on here, I don't know what's being protected, I don't know what's in, I don't know what's out, and so I'm out.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor in a second, so a good vote. And the only thing that happened in that last exchange was Councilman Wilson wanted to make sure that if someone wanted to build on top of the library, or build on top the cities, on top of this building and put housing on it, that they could. So, but, um, but I think it's important, we moved the park protection for this ordinance forward for a vote uh, at our next meeting, so if we could, it's up to you, Mayor Nash, but I'd love to just call the question.
I'm sorry, you lost me on that, and I thought we were, I thought there was a motion on the table right now that we were going to
Yeah, there is.
approve, or or vote on right now. Um, I guess I do have one question, and that's, I'm concerned that this is, um, taking on a life of its own, and that it's going to consume too much staff time. And so, I'm wondering how, if staff can give us some idea as to, um, what this looks like as far as, um, staff time, given the, um, new directions it's taken.
I, um, you know, I, I, without conferring with the city manager who I need to confer with on this to establish how much time it will take, I'm not sure that I feel like I have sufficient direction, or precise enough direction, to make, um, the changes that are necessary to get this ordinance in the place it, uh, needs to be in. But perhaps, um, with their knowledge of existing parks and general planning matters, um, Justin and Ms. Chow might have the direction that would help me, but for me, I don't, I don't know that I have specific enough direction to understand how to redraft the ordinance at this point.
May I, may I help? Because it's not that, I don't, I really don't think it's that complicated, so it's this, it's this current ordinance with an, with an exhibit attached to it that lists all the structures under which could be applied, the exception for building structure could be applied to. So require an inventory of the structures on the current parks, which I don't think are gonna be that difficult to, to put together, so there's the, there's that appendix. And the, as an exhibit. The only thing then, that, the only other items that are being changed by the motion is that the general plan that was, items that were caught by Mr. Kissel, and that the parking lots are accepted. There needs to be one draft of the motion that includes, that would just be the current motion, the current draft ordinance tonight, with those things attached, and then a second draft of the ord- of the ordinance that would also make it clear that you could build on top of, uh, you could add housing to current, to those structures, those current city structures, that is it.
Was that helpful?
Yeah, that is certainly helpful to clarify that the option that the limitation on conversion to other uses does not include housing being added to those structures, I think that was, that clarifies that piece, um. I'm still not clear what is intended by an inventory of parks with buildings, and the building exception would apply to those buildings.
That was that was, um, for a list of the parks and what structures currently exist, for example, um, in Nealon Park, there is, uh, senior center and childcare center. In Lyle Park, there is, uh, senior center, or Rosner House, so I think it's strictly that, and then, so that, um, council members and the public can, um, take a look at what is there and, um, with the buffer that is being suggested.
Well, Councilmember Mueller didn't mention a buffer, so.
I apologize, so it also would include, so it includes that staff would come back with a recommended buffer in the ordinance. And that, that is why you need the exhibit, because we need to go through and look at the, so council members and the public can go through and look at the structures and say, do we really want to add a buffer to this structure versus another? And I'm assuming that staff's gonna come back and either give us a foot or like a percentage, like five percent to square footage or something like that.
City Clerk Karen, would you please restate the motion and call for a vote? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, so I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, and a second by Vice Mayor Willison to accept the ordinance as proposed with amended amendments this evening at a buffer zone for future public facilities. General plan designation for Seminary Oaks and Sharon Hills updated to parks and recreation land use. Include all city-owned buildings on city parks, and attach a list of those buildings to the ordinance to close the loophole related to sports fields, and include an option to add housing to current city-owned structures. Any city council question or discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, um, anything from staff, was that motion clear for staff? Okay, oh, sorry, Justin, go ahead. Okay, so by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
No.
Thank you, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmembers Combs and Taylor dissenting, thank you.
The final regular business item is G three, consider adopting a resolution to remove Willow Gilbert and Willow Coleman improvements. From Menlo Uptown Public Improvement Agreement and provide direction on alternative improvements. To introduce the item is Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Louch.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to present this item uh to you this evening. Um, I will go ahead and share my screen. Judy, it appears that I've got a. Need some assistance with screen sharing.
Try now.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So Hugh Ouch, Assistant Public Works Director. Um, here to present this item to you uh this evening. So this uh item is considering the uh proposed intersection improvements at. Will Road and Coleman and Will Road and Gilbert uh that were discussed previously. Um, and uh what I want to do tonight is give you a little bit of background for you and the public about what we're discussing. Uh walk you through the improvements and provide some uh information about those and then give you a summary. Um of the additional analysis that staff has conducted since we last um talked to you about this and then share our recommendation. Um, so just by way of background, uh so the Menlo Uptown Development, which was approved in September by City Council. Um included a number of uh improvements at intersections to address level of service deficiencies consistent with. Uh the city's general plan policies. Um, on May twenty fourth of this year, uh you approved a public improvement agreement for the project. Um but directed us to bring back the two improvements uh on Willow Road at those two intersections for reconsideration. Um and in the meantime, we've been gathering uh the data, relevant data and information to help you uh with that decision-making process. Um, uh sort of by further way of background to explain, you know, why these improvements are under consideration. Um as you well know. Uh we're not allowed uh to use level service as a uh environmental metric, a sequoia metric, uh but uh we do use V M T. However, we evaluate uh impacts on intersections uh for consistency with our general plan policies. Um and we use the city's transportation impact analysis guidelines uh to shape how we do that. Um and what I have here and it is reflected in the staff report is just a kind of a high-level summary of how we um. Uh conduct that analysis. So basically, any intersection in the city where a proposed development will add at least ten trips. Uh is considered uh for potential improvement. Um and if that intersection either. Goes below level of service D, if it's not there already, or if it's already beyond that, if it adds point eight seconds per vehicle, uh then we start to look for improvements. Um and then the improvements that are identified or further evaluated for feasibility. Um and we uh essentially exclude improvements where there are going to be significant right-of-way costs, uh just given the the challenges of trying to um. Uh purchase and the cost of of uh property. Uh so so that's a an issue or where we're going to have significant impacts on other. Uh types of infrastructure. So where if we had to remove a sidewalk, for example, we would consider it to be infeasible. Um, and all these evaluations are conducted both uh what we call the near term, uh which is essentially when the project oh is expected to open. And then in the cumulative scenario, which is generally twenty forty, and it includes not just the proposed development, but also other background. Uh or other developments that are expected to happen uh by that time. So the results of the Menlo Uptown uh project identified a number um of improvements and and what I've done is I've grouped these into two sets. Uh one are the ones that uh where we expect to see an impact at project opening and then there's a set that where we expect to see impacts. Uh in the cumulative scenario. Um and one of the key differences there is that. Projects that are expected in the near term uh generally are the responsibility of the developer. Uh so Gray Star in this case. Um and then the cumulative ones, they just make a fair share contribution uh to those. So there were three locations where we found near-term. Uh impacts uh for consideration. Um and for each of those, you know, we're identifying what the proposed um improvement would be at that location. Um and then also whether or not that's in our transportation impact via Nexus study. So this is a council adopted study, of course, which tells us. Uh that, you know, there has been some level of support for making that improvement um already. I mean, those projects, generally speaking, come out of the city's transportation master plan. Um and then we also identify whether or not some intersection widening is required. So in the near term. The project at Bay Road would add an additional left turn lane coming out of Bay Road towards Willow. Um and by reducing the median, um and the ones at Coleman Avenue and Gilbert Avenue on Willow Road would essentially add right turn pockets and I'll show you images of those. Um in the in a minute. And you can see the first of those, the one at Bay Road was in uh in the TIF Nexus Study. Um and the others were not. Um and the others also do require some intersection widening. So then just quickly, there are a handful of other improvements, um a little bit closer to the project that are cumulative. Uh scenario uh improvements. So these are all ones where the developer would just be making a fair share contribution. Um and this is just sort of shown for information, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those tonight. So just quickly, the two improvements that are under consideration. So this is the one that's at Willow and Coleman and you can see. Um, if you can see my mouse, the addition of this right turn pocket here. Uh right now, there's basically an existing travel lane and a bike lane next to it. So this would continue the bike lane, obviously retain that um and. Um, add this right turn pocket uh and and to the right here, you've got Willow Oaks Park and to the left Coleman Avenue. Um and then at Gilbert, uh and of course, the orientation would change just to be confusing. Uh so Gilbert also had right turn pocket being added here. Um but the retaining the the existing bike lane. I mean, we can certainly get into some of the details of these if you have questions. So just as a quick summary of our analysis, uh there are a handful of things we wanted to share with you. So number one is that. Um while there, we do meet the ten trip threshold that I mentioned, it's really a very small increase. So it's eleven trips, in fact. Uh in the A and P can four um in the P and P. And that generally speaking, again, while we exceed that point eight seconds of delay. Um it's a rather small um increment of delay. Um and that our point eight seconds is is quite a bit lower, in fact, than what most other cities are using for equivalent uh measurements. Um, also, the improvements, especially at Coleman, really show a fairly limited reduction um in delay and we can pull those numbers up if you have questions. Um, and those at Gilbert Avenue have a little bit more reduction in delay, but also require removal of a heritage tree. Uh on that corner uh where the right turn pocket would be constructed. Um and then, you know, important to know that the delay estimates we're using, uh while we're using sort of uh reasonable techniques and accepted techniques. There are things that we can't take into account and that includes things like induced demand or the fact that you're part of a larger transportation network and, you know, one change at one intersection doesn't always necessarily. Produce all of the improvement you might expect when you think about it as part of a whole larger system. Um and then finally, uh there's a is a concern that the improvements would increase crossing distance for pedestrians. These are routes that are used for kids to get to school. Um and certainly that's an issue that we uh take seriously and want to make sure we're considering as part of this decision as well. Uh and then the other thing that we wanted to share is that um this is shared in the staff report as well is that. We have been thinking about this since we last discussed this with you um and identifying some potential alternate and about a potential alternate improvement. Um and what we're suggesting might uh have some both safety benefits and potential congestion reduction benefits is to pursue something that we call protected permissive. Uh left turn phasing at these two intersections. And so you can see on the image here, this is actually the improvement that just went in or is it really still in the process of going in at Ravenswood and Laurel? Um that was completed recently and essentially this allows a sort of partial uh protection of the left turn phases. And so those left turns against. Uh pedestrian crossings can be certainly a a concern uh for pedestrian safety. So that has that kind of benefit. While also, um if they're only permissive, that is to say, if you can only go when you see a gap in traffic uh coming from the other direction. Um, that can cause a lot of delay for that particular movement. So uh this is an improvement that could make sense uh to potentially. Um, uh consider instead to have, you know, some of both uh types of benefits that we might want to have, both safety and congestion reduction. Um and as you can see, the cost of those improvements ranges, we think from about a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars per location. Um and would be the higher number if we had to actually replace the poles, if we can use the existing poles that are out there and just put this new uh. Nice-looking uh signal head out there, then it it's a little bit lower. Um but if we had to replace them for a variety of reasons, there are a number of reasons we might have to, then that would cost somewhat more. So with that, um our recommendation for you uh tonight is to consider a resolution to remove the improvements at the two locations from the public improvement agreement. Um and also to provide us with direction on pursuing the alternative improvement option. Um and if you have any questions, I do have a number of uh additional pieces of information we're happy to share. I I get into more detail. With that, I will happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um are there any clarifying questions? All right, City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G three. Consider adopting a resolution to remove Willow Gilbert. And Willow Coleman improvements from Menlo Uptown Public Improvement Agreement and provide direction on alternative improvements. Engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Joseph Afong. Joseph, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, yes, hi. Um, hold on, let me get to my right screen. Sorry about that. I'm not that. Essentially, Honorable Mayor and Member of City Council, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you. I would first of all like to. Uh, I thank you of the staff for the removal of these two items. From their plans. I think it is well thought of and the left, the right turn lanes, dedicated right turn lanes did not make any sense. And anyway, but I will not dwell on that. The benefit of it is so small compared to the potential liability. And what I like to do is take this opportunity to address one question, one thing, one item that has been on my mind for a long time. I think Willow Road residents uh on Willow Road has really not. Been looked at as an integral part of Menlo Park residents for many city projects. Um. We like, I like to. Let the city council, city staff, and also any consultants know that. It was residents on. Uh, of Willow Row. Is an integral part of Menlo Park and that the Willow Row should be treated. As a resident, the residents of this uh street and not an expressway. There's a history of this regard. For Willow Row residents, the city project, the vivid sample is item number forty-eight of the two thousand nineteen transportation master plan. Which attempted to turn Willow Road into a four-lane expressway, taking away right. Street parking, making the street more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. Residents and Willow Row and others from nearby street rose up a former group to voice our objections. This proposal was ultimately dropped from the master plan. Willow Row residents are supportive of. Traffic improvements and we want to be treated like any other Menlo Park residents. Please look out for our needs and safety. We're willing to endure the daily congestion from commuting traffic. But please do not ignore our well-being and trade away our safety and needs. Lastly, I have a concrete suggestion. When the city engages consultants for any future projects, please advise the consultants that Willow Row is. A residential street to ensure that any proposal will reflect this destination. Thank you for your time and consideration and I am a resident that to to one sixth of Willow Row. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on item G three. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to open for a city council discussion. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash. Um, so I'm I'm supportive of the staff direction on on this uh with regards to removing the right turn pockets. Um, and uh hopefully, uh the staff can also get direction from the rest of council. Um to to look at the protect protected permissive uh left left turn uh s- signal. Um, but but Mr. Lauter, I have to bring you back up. So like if you if you we can reuse the poll. And we're just putting in that new signal, that alone is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's that's our our rough estimate for what we think it will cost. Uh obviously, at this point, what we've done is kind of looked at some recent examples. Um and we would develop a a final cost for that and certainly share that back with um city council members uh before. Um, you know, we we finalized uh any improvement there. So, um, you know, we may have a little tendency to be a little conservative. Prices are certainly going up all the time and we and we wouldn't want to understate uh what we thought the cost would be.
Okay, thanks. Um and I want to respond to Mr. Fong. Um, uh completely hear you. I would say that like I have met with. Um, more of the residents on Willow Road than I have the residents on any other street in in Menlo Park since I've been on on council. Um, and and I know and appreciate your your frustrations. I I would say that things like the speed feedback side and prioritizing. Um, the um uh the 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 re- re-asphalting with um with some of the noise dampening um a- asphalt. Were all things done in in response to to um uh some of the the efforts of of your neighbors on Willow Road. To bring attention to the very specific conditions um that they that they were facing. And um and and so again, I I know that 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 there are sort of structural issues and the fact that, you you know, Willow. Um, obviously is is an exit from the freeway and it can be uh it it is a ma- major conduit to either get to to downtown Palo Alto. Hospital or even 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 Menlo Park. Um, and and so there there are some some limits to to uh what what can be done to to really address that, but. Um, I I have attempted and and I I think some of my colleagues here to to really sort of hear um and address the concerns of of um. Of of the residents on 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 Willow Road and and I certainly don't think. Um, that that they are an afterthought and and I think that sure, at one point, yeah, I think. Um, some of the 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 planning and ideas of of prior councils. Our commissions were about sort of, you you know, Willow Road in connection to the throughput, like how. Much traffic you could get through it at certain high-demand times, but I don't think that that's where this council is. Um, and and that anyone would be sort of like prioritizing. Just getting traffic through, um but really sort of looking at that as 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 a neighborhood street, al- also understanding that, like I said, it is a main conduit. Um, uh given it's it's key connection points. Uh but but yeah, but want to reiterate that I am um appreciate all of the the staff time and effort in this. Again, I am I am supportive of of removing the right turn pockets um and and also supportive of giving staff direction to explore a protective permissive uh left turn. At 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 Willow and Gilbert.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Um, yeah, I want to um uh reiterate, uh Councilmember Combs, uh thanks to the staff for. This additional analysis and I appreciate Councilmember Combs' support in the removal of these um of these. Improvements, like like to put improvements in quotes there. Um, and uh. I I do have um a question for staff. I know that the residents on Willow Road. Um, have asked repeatedly over the years about. have asked repeatedly over the years about a crosswalk. Right now, there's really no way for anyone to cross Willow Road between Gilbert and Middlefield. And I, I, I know people on both sides of Willow Road there that would probably like to visit each other. So I know it's a little beyond the scope, but if I could just flag that as something that I would be interested in, in seeing come back at some point. And I do support Councilmember Combs' request to explore the left turn light. And I'm actually ready to make a motion to, to remove the two right turn lanes that were in the condition of approval and to have staff look at the cost and the feasibility of the left turn lights. And then I'd also like to add if staff can also explore the, the crosswalk concept that's been raised multiple times over the years. So that, that's my motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. I also want to add that I reached out to Gray Star today and spoke with our new the new representative there, Matt Yudosh, and he has offered that in lieu of constructing the LOS intersection, that if we decide as we are to go ahead with the alternative approach that Gray Star is willing to discuss a contribution to offset some of the costs of up to three hundred thousand dollars for those costs. So thank you very much to Mr. Yudosh and Gray Star. And would you like to second to the motion? Councilmember Combs.
Sure, I'm gonna second. And I only have those some concerns about this offer and that it was made to you. And then that, that didn't come with the Gray Star representative coming to make a comment between, to, to public comment to entire.
He is here.
Well, I think he should make that comment as a public comment. I don't think we should be doing and negotiating deals in, in calls or in back rooms about providing funding to, to the city that is different than the funding mechanism that was set up. Because I think that they got, the staff had explored that option and got pushback from Gray Star and, and not acquiescence to that idea. And so if now that they are seeing something different, then this becomes very problematic. When one council member calls and gets a different answer than what, what staff got. And that, that, that this is coming not from a public comment offer from Gray Star, but from a city member of the city council. Incredibly problematic.
I will say that I did, before I approached Gray Star, I did speak with the city manager and the city attorney.
And we still didn't get, if, if Gray Star wanted to make an offer, they should have made the offer in public as part of public comment. When, when it was made, that is when they should have made the offer. Making the offer to one individual member of council is inappropriate and I think unethical. Especially to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars.
I am not sure what to say at this point. Mr. Yudosh, would you like to make a public comment? Or would you prefer to just let this be worked out at another time?
So I do see Matt's hand up. It is staying up, so I'll go ahead and through the mail reopen public comment. Right. Matt, you should have the ability to unmute.
Hi, good evening. My name's Matt Yudash. I'm with Gray Star.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I I'm in agreement with what Mayor Nash stated. We are supportive of removing these two LOS improvements. And also, you know, we're, we're open to making a contribution to offset some of the expenses associated with the new signal phasing at the intersections. The exact amount, I mean, to be decided, but we're, we're open to that discussion. And if anyone has any further questions of me, please let me know.
So I do have a question. Do you know that, or had you have any history of understanding that, that staff engage you about that very issue? And do you know how you or any representative of your, your corporation responded to that?
I have not been approached, Councilmember Combs. I, and I'm, and I'm not aware of anyone being approached previously. My predecessor has since left Gray Star, so if there was a discussion, I'm unaware of it.
And so then my question is to staff, like, did we have this discussion with any representative of Gray Star?
If I may, you know, Assistant Public Works Director, so I, I certainly did not in my staff. I do, I do not believe had that conversation. You know, I can defer to the city manager if anyone, you know, at another level had that. But I, I know that we, we might have been hopeful, but, you know, we didn't consider it to be within the realm of something that we could specifically request because it wasn't, it's not within the conditions of approval as they were approved. So my understanding is that from my perspective, we did not make a specific request.
So then there was no request made to the staff. I was communicating to the staff by, by, by staff that this was something that was, was again, not part of something that they had to deliver and pay for it. And that the Gray Star paying for it was not an option. Is, is, was that not accurate? Was that never communicated to me? Was that not ever the reality of the situation?
So I would just like to interrupt for a moment, saying this is entirely voluntary.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying it's, it's not, it's not voluntary, but my question is, is that how it is received? Right? And, and so to me, like, if, if there is a voluntary offer being made to the city by an entity, then they come to, to, to the meeting where it is an agenda item and they make that to make that offer public. That is, especially if, if it is, if it, if what I have been communicated is that, that that is not a possibility, that they pay for that. That what they would pay for or what was in, in the scope was the right turn pockets. But anything else was, was, was not in scope. And so that that would be on the city's dime.
So I believe that that actually is correct. And that's what I heard from the city manager the other day. And I said, would, could I reach out to, this was on yesterday, and I just said, could I reach out to Gray Star and ask them if they would be willing to make a voluntary contribution? He said, run it by the city attorney. I did that. And the three of us were on board with, and I made the call this afternoon.
Why wasn't that communicated as part of public comment? I mean, it, it, it seems like a deal that was, again, I think it's highly inappropriate. I, I think, I think it is. And, and so I, I will leave it there, especially if, if the idea or the scenario has been that like that, that if we're looking specifically at the protective permissive turn, that that's not something that can be that they are required to pay for and that they will pay for. And if the circumstances have changed, then I just think that there is an obligation that that be, that be publicly communicated completely transparently, completely above board and not something done in, 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 in calls.
Through the mayor.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Combs that the the contribution cannot be required of the applicant at this point. That would require a modification of the use permit, which is not before the council this evening. So the mechanisms for contributing the, the three hundred thousand dollars have not been worked out and, and at this point are not mandatory on the permitee and applicant.
That is my understanding as well. This was something that was entirely voluntary. And out of the, just strong relationship that Gray Star has with the city and trying to make it right. You know, help.
I think that there's always ways that you do things. And, and so like if, if there is a strong relationship with the city, then you come and you make the offer to, to the city. And again, you, you actually, you make it to staff. And then there is, and you, you, you loop in, involve the city attorney and it is officially presented. This is sort of kind of like a crisis rate situation. What's behind door number three? That's not the way city government should work.
City Clerk Karen, could you please repeat the motion and call for a vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. I did want to just get a point of clarification. Vice Mayor Wilson had mentioned the inclusion of a crosswalk, and I just didn't catch that direction fully. But I see Mr. Louch is on.
Through the mayor, if, if I may. So we do have an ongoing project that's looking at unmarked, uncontrolled crossings right now. So the crossings that Vice Mayor Wilson mentioned that are between Gilbert and Middlefield on Willow are included in that project. So certainly happy to have that further direction from you tonight. But there will be a time in the future where we bring back a kind of prioritization and some potential improvements at other unmarked crossings and not just there, but in fact, in a number of locations throughout the city. So just wanted to, to let you know about that.
Thank you.
So through the mayor, I do see City Councilmember Taylor's hand up. And then I did want to just refer back to Vice Mayor Wilson to see if that inclusion in this motion is, is still accurate.
Thank you, please. City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. There were just two items that I wanted to flag because it's not listed in the staff report, partly because it wasn't studied along with this project, but which is nearby. And that is the intersection on Marsh Road at the one oh one freeway exits, both on the southbound and the northbound side. There is a red, there's a red light, there's a red light arrow turn that people run regularly. There's been multiple accidents. There was one bad accident last week. And so it's just flagging this as a place that needs to be paid attention to, since that's not on the list of improvements. And it's also a place where pedestrians cross. The other is delays. There are long delays traveling out to Bayfront from Chillicothe. I know that that wasn't a part of the study here. But I'm just flagging these things as in the future, when we can bring back the, the TIF, the Transportation Impact Nexus Study, I think that will be helpful since we're trying to increase safety for pedestrians. And these are two areas where it's problematic. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
First, thanks to Councilmember Taylor for pointing out other areas that need pedestrian safety. And to City Clerk Karen's question, Mr. Louch has satisfied my need to include that in the motion. So I, I, as long as there's some work being done on pursuing that crosswalk or looking into it, I'm, I don't need to put it into this. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the clarification. So through the mayor, may I repeat the motion? Thank you. So the motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Wilson and a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution to remove improvements at Willow Road and Gilbert Avenue and at Willow Road and Coleman Avenue from the Menlo Uptown Public Improvement Agreement and explore at Willow and Gilbert, a protected left-hand turn. Any other city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote.
Sorry, through the, through the mayor, just wanted to clarify about the protected left turn, whether it's at both intersections or solely at Willow and Gilbert.
If that was for me, I think the intention was to explore both intersections. And is that, is that, so if I were traveling from Middlefield towards one oh one, the protected left lane is on Willow Road. So it'd be going in both directions.
Yes, both, both, both directions of Willow Road.
Okay. Thanks.
So seeing no amendments to the motion, is that correct? Okay, by roll call vote. City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now at information items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our informational item H one or city council agenda topics, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational item H one. Seeing none. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the informational items? And so we will move on to the city manager's report with city manager Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you. And I believe this is the, the first meeting where I'm in attendance with the, with the title city manager. So since I was absent at the last meeting and remote at the meeting before that, do appreciate being able to serve, serve in this, this role. So in terms of updates this evening, one update is related to the USGS site located three, four, five Middlefield. It's been subject to a lot of discussion. The Federal General Services Administration has extended the deadline for, for bids on the property. It was originally target for a date prior to now, but now it's been extended to the end of August. And on the publicly accessible website for the bidding process, the GSA recently published an updated invitation for bids and highlighted the, the changes to that document. So I know there, there's probably bit of interest in the property. And so it will take a, a few more weeks before those bids are due. So in terms of some other, other topics, we do have the upcoming municipal election for the city council with the three districts, districts one, two, and three. And the information nomination period is open and it closes this Friday, August 12th. So we've been trying to make sure that people are aware of that deadline. And if anybody's interested, they can reach out to our city clerk Judy Heron to regarding the, the papers that are necessary. And Judy would be happy to assess with, assist with any of the documentation or scheduling an appointment.
Let me just make one clarification. It's district. It's districts one, two, and four.
Sorry. One, two, and four, thank you. Let's see, so there's also the opening of the Bellhaven School Field for greater public access on afternoons and weekends. And that launched this in the past weekend. And it's going to be open for the next few months through this pilot program. And there will be some upcoming concerts and events at the site. So definitely looking forward to increased use of that facility. And then there are a couple of construction updates. One is the Sharon Road sidewalks are coming nearly complete and should be ready for opening later this month, associated with the upcoming school year. And then there are two projects that are out to bid. One is related to the Chrysler Pump Station. It's been many years in the making, but it's a major milestone for that project to be outbid to place the 60-year-old facility and be able to take advantage of a $5 million grant from Federal Emergency Management Association Agency. The other project out to bid is related to the Deadwell Bayfront Park and the gas and lead shape monitoring system. So it is a former landfill and there is ongoing infrastructure maintenance needs for the sites. So we're looking forward to having responsive bids on both of those projects. And they would, both of those contracts would be coming for the council, we're hoping sometime this fall. So those are a few updates I wanted to share with the council and the community.
Thank you very much. And we will now go to city council member reports. We have one item, J1, confirm voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. To introduce the item is City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So the item before you is the delegation of voting for the annual conference and expo held by the League of California Cities, September 7th through the 9th. The city council can either name their voting delegate and alternates or no, they have, you have to name your voting delegate. So that is the item for you.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. For any member of the public who wishes to speak on item J1, confirm voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. You're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Final call for a public comment on item J1. Seeing none, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you so much. All right, we are open for city council discussion and City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I have an offering to attend on your behalf.
That would be terrific. Thank you so much. Is there any other discussion or? All right, City Clerk Karen.
So by acclamation, we will assign City Councilmember Taylor as the voting delegate.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, City Councilmember Taylor. Are there any other city council member reports? Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I don't have the item tonight, but I wanted to give the council a heads up of what I am going to be sending the council for consideration at a later date. So I have been spending quite a bit of time at the farmer's market and things and events here in town and have discovered in talking with Alliance Club and others around town that people do the pandemic and other things. We have a lot of new faces in town. People aren't really aware what's going on, different parts of the city. And so the idea is that the city would have what I would call something called the Menlo Marquee. But like, it would be signage either in front of the library here or at the, where the corner store building is on Ravenswood. That would be done tastefully, but like an old style sign that would tell people all the events that are happening in the city. Because the hanging poster across Santa Cruz Avenue just can't capture them all. And so I'll be sending that, I'll be sending something forward to you all for your consideration. I don't expect it's a product, a project that will be completed in the near term, but it's an idea for something that we could do to sort of enhance the downtown and let people know what is happening, community rise around them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Several of my constituents reached out to me in response to survey requests that they had received. And the survey answers were about city government issues and affairs and city council members. Some of the questions asked, very specific questions about whether they trusted council members or not, or the extent to which they trusted council members. And at least for a couple of these residents, because they weren't, it wasn't clear to them what the source of the polling or surveying was, had thought and reached out to me that it was funded by the city. And I said, I was almost certain that the city did not fund the, this, the survey or this poll. But I didn't know everything that the city does. And so that I would touch base with the city manager to confirm. And I did touch base with the city manager to confirm that the, the city did not pay for, for this poll. Like I said, that asked questions such as the, to the extent to which people trust certain members of council. It seemed in some way related to the initiative and there were questions to that regard. So I did reach out to the school district and to the main proponents of the initiative that's going to be on the ballot in November. And both of those parties said that they, they had no role in funding this poll. And so I would only say that whoever it is who has funded this poll, certainly it is, is very much your right to engage in this, this activity. And it's apparently your legal right to be a little bit opaque as far as your, your identity. But I would say that in the name of transparency, you, especially if you're someone who is involved, an entity or organizations that are involved in this community and committed to it, that for the sake of transparency, that you would say that you've been completely clear that you funded this poll and what you were hoping to achieve in sending it out to residents. And so I just, again, wanted to share that because I think transparency has been something that has been really important to me. And I certainly encourage all parties and entities to engage in the democratic process and that that's completely fair. But I would also hope that in Menlo Park, we'd hold ourselves to a higher standard and that we would really, like I say, subscribe to the ideas of transparency and integrity and engaging in this process and be, you know, quite clear who we are and be willing to put our names to what we're doing in the public space. Thank you.
I would just echo what you're saying. And I've got several calls as well of people who thought that it was funded by the city, put out by the city. And yes, it, all I could do was say no, it was not from the city. Councilmember Combs, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller.
I just want to clarify, it's not funded by me either.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourning at 8:21. Thank you.